Okay, I'd like to call to order the Camrio Board of Library Trustees Regular Meeting for Wednesday, June 26, 2024. The time is now five o'clock. And can our City Clerk please take roll call?
Trustee Kildy.
Here.
Trustee Santangelo. Trustee Trembley. President Protem Tennyson.
Here.
And President Martinez Bravo.
Here. Thank you. And can Councilmember Santangelo please lead us into the flag salute?
Please stand. Ready to begin.
Allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will move down to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to the general public comments. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the library specifically at this moment? All right, seeing no one, we will move on to the consent calendar. Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. May the City Clerk please take votes?
Trustee Kildy.
Yes.
Trustee Santangelo.
Yes.
Trustee Trembley. President Protem Tennyson.
Yes.
President Martinez Bravo.
Yes. Thank you. And that moves unanimously. We will now move to our discussion items. Do we have a report from our staff?
Good afternoon, Madam President and fellow library trustees. Summer is our busiest season at the Camrio Public Library and where we see the most engagement from the community. On June 15th, the library hosted our first Teta Truck event to launch our 2024 summer reading program. This event, which including a fascinated array of vehicles drew over 560 attendees. And we hope to plan more Teta Truck events in the future. In tandem with the Teta Truck event, we organized our first bookmark contest and over 130 people participated. The winning designs are professionally printed and available throughout the library, and I think I do give you some samples. I want to thank the Friends of the Camrio Library for sponsoring our winners and providing funding for our weekly summer reading performances this summer. July is Disability Pride Month, and the library is hosting a discussion titled Call Me Capable. The presenter, Carol Leach, is a journalist, motivational speaker, and disability consultant. Carol will share her journey of overcoming barriers with courage, humor, and determination on Friday, July 14th, at 2:00 p.m. At this time, I want to introduce our new Assistant Library Director, Julia Parsons. Julia most recently worked as a branch manager at Riverside County Library System and moved with her husband and pets to Camrio. Julia will be working closely with me to deliver some of our library initiatives and will be overseeing adult services IT. She's already been a fantastic addition to our team. And that concludes my report, and I'm happy to address any questions.
Thank you very much, Mandy. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Getting into the busy season.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mandy. And I did read the report with the increase of checkouts, library checkouts in comparison to even last summer and last year. So keep up the great work. And Ms. Parsons, Pearson's, Parsons? Parsons. Welcome to Camrio. We're very lucky to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Do we have any more board or staff comments? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting.
I will open this meeting in the Camrio Sanitary District. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll move on to general public comments. Is there anybody that would like to address the Camrio Sanitary District? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll move us to the consent calendar.
I'll move.
I have a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Director Kildy.
Yes.
Director Martinez Bravo.
Yes.
Director Trembley.
Yes.
Secretary Tennyson.
Yes.
And Chair Santangelo.
Yes. Okay, that brings us down to our public hearing, item C on the agenda, which is a resolution placing direct assessments on the Ventura County Secured Property Tax Roll. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, members of the Sanitary Board. This is an annual resolution to place delinquent sewer service charges on the county property tax roll for collection at the time the property taxes are paid. CSD Ordinance Number 49 authorizes delinquent sewer charges to be placed on this county secured property tax roll. On May 7th, notifications were mailed to 16 customers informing them of this public hearing and the intent to place their delinquent accounts on the tax roll for collection. As of this date, there are six delinquent accounts outstanding. And that concludes the brief report. I'm available for questions. Otherwise, this is a public hearing.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yeah, Mark, I just wanted to... There you are. Welcome. Did I hear right? You said there's six delinquent accounts now? Did I hear that right?
Correct. The notices were sent to sixteen. Sixteen.
Sixteen, right.
And then 10 had paid up until now. And then the remaining six are scheduled to be sent to the county.
And then what's the procedure for the remaining six? Is there still opportunity for them to get out of arrears?
Opportunity for them to pay?
Pay their delinquent and get...
Up until the time we send the file to the county, which is tomorrow. And then once it goes on the tax roll, it will be included on their property tax bill when that comes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Would anybody like to address the Camrio Sanitary District on this item? Seeing nobody come forward, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council.
Move approval.
We have a motion and an approval and a second. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Director Kildy.
Yes.
Director Martinez Bravo.
Yes.
Director Trembley.
Yes.
Secretary Tennyson.
Yes.
And Chair Santangelo.
Yes. And that passes unanimously. Okay, this brings us down to items D, E, and F, which are joint with the City Council. So at this time, we will recess until we reopen with council.
All right, we'll convene this meeting of the Successor Agency for Wednesday, June 26, 2024. Let the record reflect that all directors are here. Are there any public comments to the successor agency? It's okay, you can all rush up to the podium at once. No? No comment, no public comments? We have consent calendar items A through A and B. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
We've got a motion. I think Mr. Tiggo's the runner, Mr. Kildy is the second. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo? Councilmember Tennyson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kildy?
Yes.
And Mayor Trembley.
Yes. All right, that item is adopted on a five to zero vote. Are there any board comments? Hearing none, are there any staff comments? All right, we will adjourn the meeting of the successor agency and now call to order the meeting of the Camrio City Council. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. All right, first up, we've got a presentation item from the West Ventura County Business Alliance, the Top 10. And I want to welcome Andrew Kiefer. And Andrew, it's been at least a week since I've seen you. So, welcome. And we appreciate you being here. We see Nancy Lindholm in the back. So, anyway, welcome aboard.
Well, thank you, council members. Good late afternoon, early evening. My name is Andrew Kiefer. I am the Chair of the West Ventura County Business Alliance. It is the unification of the Chambers of Commerce of Camrio and Oxnard. And tonight I'm here because we're extremely proud to announce our 2024 Camrio Top 10 Community Award Honorees. Camrio Chamber of Commerce and now the West Ventura County Business Alliance is in its 57th year of acknowledging the people, businesses, and organizations that make Camrio the fabulous place that it is. We have many of the award recipients here this evening, so I'll ask them to stand as we announce their names, organizations, and businesses. So first up, we have our Educated of the Year from Los Colinas Middle School, Sarah Chinberg. Next up, we have our Volunteer of the Year, Nina Andres. Next up, someone who couldn't be here tonight is our Public Servant of the Year from the Camrio Police Department and Ventura County Sheriff, Senior Deputy John Meeker. We have our Nonprofit of the Year is Action VC. Action VC helps support vulnerable neighbors in Ventura County and those who often fall through the cracks of the care system. So we have Veronica Browning here representing Action VC. Next up, we have our Entrepreneur of the Year. A Camrio business that was established here in 2016 is Eric Horn of the owner of Eric the Bug Guy. We've probably all seen his trucks around town. Next up, we have our Business of the Year. It is Villanova Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, represented here tonight by Professor Beto and his wife Alicia Villanova. And their daughter Amelia. We have our Man of the Year tonight is the backbone of the Miracle League of the 805, Rick Pena. Our Woman of the Year is representing the Camrio Family YMCA is the Executive Director, Megan Borchell. And another person who could not be here tonight, who is our Stan Daley Lifetime Achievement Award recipient, is Al Lowe. So those are our 10 nominees, our 10 awardees. I'd like to congratulate all of you and all the contributions that you make to our great city. The West Ventura County Business Alliance will be presenting these 10 awardees with their formal awards and presentation at our dinner on July 25th at Spanish Hills Country Club. And all the details can be found on the West Ventura County Business Alliance website. Thank you, council members, and thank you to all of our honorees.
Mr. Kiefer, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Alliance. Any members of the council have any questions, comments? Congratulations to all of the awardees. Thank you for joining us tonight. We've got a really full agenda on our fiscal year 2425 budget and a lot of other interesting items, so feel free to stay. But if you have to go, we understand as well. But really, you are the reason why, together with a lot of other folks in our community, it's what makes Camrio what it is. So thank you very, very much. And congratulations to all the awardees. All right, we're going to proceed then to... Oh darn, it's a mass exodus. That's okay, we understand. We really are nice people. Okay, all right. It's now time for council and staff comments and reports. First of all, are there any staff reports, Mr. Ramirez? Anything from staff? Okay, let's go to council reports. Who wants to start off? Councilmember Martinez Bravo.
Sure. For meetings attended or events, June 18th, I attended the Coons and Cops event at Bob Kildy Park. It was a really fun event. It was complimentary ice cream for the children. And I took my family and they had a great time. So great community outreach to the VC sheriffs. Thank you. June 24th, I attended the Investment Committee meeting with Councilmember Tennyson. And on June 26th today, this morning, I attended the groundbreaking of Disdar Park. And I know there's another community event coming soon, but we were able to do the photo ops today. So we did that with our full council and staff. Thank you.
Okay. Who's next? Councilmember Santangelo.
Okay, for meetings attended, on June 13th, I attended the Airport Authority. On June 20th, CPA Executive Committee. On... I'm sorry, actually, that meeting was canceled because we had our board retreat on June 21st out in Los Angeles from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. That was a really great day. As Ted said to us, it was a day that we got to share our opinions without having to vote on them. But it was really a great time for us to really talk about things and where CPA was headed into the future without really having to make decisions at that point. It was really good for staff to hear what board members had to say. And then, let's see, back to June 25th, I sat in on the broadband focus group, which was very interesting. June 26th, earlier today, we had CPA Finance Committee and the groundbreaking at Disdar Park. And that's all I have.
All right, who's next up? Vice Mayor Kildy, you're up.
All right. June 20th, I attended a VRSD meeting. Yesterday, June 25th, I actually attended a meeting with VRSD as well. It was a committee meeting. And today, we had the groundbreaking at Disdar Park. So, long history in Camrio. My dad started his business right across from Disdar Park in 1954. So I'm really well versed with that park for many years. But it was a great groundbreaking. It's going to be a state-of-the-art, a long-time-coming park, but it's going to be a huge asset to that part of town. So we all hung in there, and it's going to be it's going to be a really good thing to see it come to fruition. So I want to thank staff and all my council members that had anything to do with that. It took a long time, but it's going to be really, really good. So those are my comments.
Councilmember Tennyson.
Thank you, Mayor. On June 18th, along with City Manager Greg Ramirez, I participated in a Zoom meeting with Assemblymember Steve Bennett and Senator Lamone, county staff, and I think that's about it. And the topic was the Ventura County Youth Authority, hence Ventura Schools, which is completely closed down. And the state is going through a process to declare its surplus property. And the way that works is the agency that has the property now has the first right to come up with an alternative for their agency. In this case, it would be CDCR, the Youth Division of California Department of Rehabilitation and Corrections. If they don't want to do anything with the property, it opens up to all other state agencies first. It's probably a two-year-long process. And the city manager and I had an opportunity to provide input. One of my concerns is an adjacent city has a council member that proposed that for a countywide homeless shelter, which in and of itself may be a good thing, but it doesn't address the prescriptions of a federal court decision in Grants Pass, which says in order to move people out of public places and prevent camping in public places and on your sidewalks and in your shopping centers, the homeless services have to be within the jurisdiction. In other words, within the city limits. This property is just outside the city limits. It's in the county of Ventura. So Thousand Oaks, Oxnard, Ventura, all the other cities sending their homeless here would not address the federal court's requirements that the services be provided in their own jurisdiction. We also, I also asked if they're going to keep local government, specifically the city of Camrio and the county Ventura, involved in the process, and they promised they would. Both offices have already sent letters to the appropriate agencies to say they're very interested in what's going on with this property. There are two legislators that represent this area of Camrio, this area of Ventura County, just outside of our city limits. And Assemblymember Bennett's legislative website may have now, but will shortly have a public-facing link to keep any residents in Camrio and in Ventura County aware of what's going on as this process moves forward. But the point is, it's a slow process. The city will have input, the county will have input, and we should know hopefully well in advance what direction they're going. Did I cover that pretty well, Greg?
Okay. June 20th, I had an RDP board meeting, also a VCOG Administrative Committee meeting, and an EDC meeting. On June 24th, the Investment Committee. And yesterday, I took the opportunity to watch all the little kids with cones with cops at Mission Oaks Park. It was pretty impressive. The kids love it. They love seeing law enforcement resources. And I noticed the police chief giving them all little sticker badges. So we have a whole bunch of brand-new junior deputy sheriffs running around Camrio, so we should feel safe. Thank you.
All right, very good. For meetings attended, on June 13th, I had a special meeting of the Board of Directors of the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency, also a meeting that night with, together with Councilmember Santangelo for the Airport Authority. On June 14th, I had two board committee meetings for MetroLink. On June 26th today, the Disdar Park groundbreaking, and then another Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency board meeting this afternoon. Actually, I skipped over yesterday. I think I arrived after Councilmember Tennyson yesterday with cones with cops. And I did notice Commander Tennyson giving stickers to kids. But in all seriousness, it was a great success. It was really nice to see everybody interacting together at Mission Oaks Park. Two quick announcements. One is that I was privileged to attend a memorial service for Larry Davis on June 22. Those of you who may not know, but Larry Davis was a longtime fixture here in city government, including an assistant city manager, city manager. Larry was an Air Force veteran and dedicated, just put simply, he was dedicated to community service and dedicated to public service on the ceremony. The memorial service fit him very well, and we miss him. The second is kudos to our finance department. I'm looking over, I see Mark, I see Bobby. I'm going to freeze this here tonight. Oh, there she is. Okay. For the fiscal year end 2023, we've been notified that the city once again has been awarded a Certificate of Excellence by the Governmental Finance Officers Association of America. And it's a very prestigious award. When cities prepare their annual comprehensive financial reports, in order to qualify for the GFOA award, they have to do it in a particular way that sets out everything very clearly. It's a very high set of standards. Our city consistently, year after year, meets those standards. And it's important because from a transparency standpoint, it allows the public to very quickly look at all the graphs, all the textual information in that report, and easily be able to assess from a transparency standpoint where the city is from a budget and financial standpoint. So kudos to our finance staff. Another great job. We are really proud of the efforts that you all are making. So thank you very much. All right, that's it for me on announcements. We've got consent calendar items B through W, but before I ask for a motion on that, I think we have a question from Councilmember Martinez Bravo on item G, right?
Yes, Mayor.
Can you go ahead with that?
Sure. And I don't want to pull the item. I just had a question. I know the Camrio Old Town Association puts on the Heritage Days Midsummer Fiesta, and they're having it this year, and they're here today. Thank you for the wonderful work. It's such a fun experience for our family and so many other families in Camrio and throughout. So my only question is, I know we provide an in-kind donation, and I just wanted to get the correct number. Is the quantity that's indicated in the report, is that the total number, or is there additional in-kind donation funding? That's a question for staff.
That would be the total number.
Okay, so it is, I have here $43,300?
That's correct.
Correct. Okay, thank you. That is it. Mayor Trembley.
That's it?
Yes, thank you.
All right. And kudos to the Old Town Association, Camrio Old Town Association, for all of your efforts. I know there are many members of the COTA here tonight. All right, are there any other questions on any of the consent calendar items, items B through W respectively? All right, hearing none, we've received no public comments on any of these items, correct, Madam Clerk? All right, do I hear a motion on the consent calendar items?
I'll move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on consent calendar items B through W respectively. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tennyson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kildy?
Yes.
And Mayor Trembley.
Yes. Record will reflect that that item was approved on a five-zero unanimous vote. That brings us to, that brings us to discussion item X, which is compensation for members of the City Council. And I believe, Ms. Richmond, are you going to present on that item, correct?
Yes, Mayor, I'll be handling the item. Thank you. Yes, council and mayor and city council. Council members currently are receiving compensation subject to the government code. They are currently... They are currently receiving, or you are currently receiving fifteen hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents per month. The government code also allows for increases of up to five percent per year, or due to an amendment to the government code, up to ten percent per calendar year. In addition, any discussion or approval of increases will be done by ordinance, but the increases cannot take effect until a council member takes their term, a new term, which will occur at the end of December, such that the increases will only take place in January. In addition, there were amendments made to the government code that adjusted the salary increases permitted under the government code. That was not particularly of import to cities such as Camarillo that regularly review their salary adjustments, but there is a recognition that council members do spend significant time commitments, and that by increasing the salary permitted for council members, it may also encourage people to run for office who may not otherwise run for office due to other commitments which they are compensated for. The city council, over the last ten years, have approved increases ranging from five percent per year, as well as waiving any increases, for example, during the pandemic in twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. Most recently, in twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four, the council approved increases of two-point-five percent per year. So, for the options that the city council may consider, again, you may discuss and determine whether increases will be considered, up to five percent, if any. I would also like to note, although there is a CPI increase permitted in the code, this is due to a new amendment to the statute, and we do not have enough CPI information right now, so we're not recommending that the CPI analysis be considered. So, again, there is a direction that will be taken if you want to do an increase, and if so, to provide direction to return with an ordinance for consideration for adoption, or to provide any other direction that the council so determines. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks very much, Rachel. Are there any, before we start our discussion, are there any questions of the city attorney? Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Thank you, Mayor. To our city attorney, so if a council member wishes not to take the compensation, are they forced to take it, or what options do they have?
The statute specifically states that a council member may themselves personally just not accept the salary increase. So, even though there may be an ordinance that provides for the salary, they may determine that they do not want to take that increase or any amount, and they can work with the city to ensure they do not receive that amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other, before we start discussion, Vice Mayor Kildee?
Counselor, I just want to make sure that I'm on board with this, that anything that we do tonight is, it's not retroactive. In other words, it does not go into effect until after the next election. And with that, would that be FY two thousand twenty-five?
Right. So, effectively, what it means is, you'll adopt the ordinance, but it doesn't go into effect until after the next election, and the practice here at the city is that it will be then January one, in this case, of two thousand twenty-five.
Any other questions? All right, who'd like to start off? Councilmember Tennyson?
I have some strong feelings about this. I'm probably in a very unique situation from one standpoint, in that I have thirty-six plus years of public service between the Marine Corps and the Sheriff's Office, and I retired almost thirteen and a half years ago with a very comfortable pension. I visited with former council member and many, many, many times Mayor Charlotte Craven before pulling papers to run, so that I would fully understand the time commitment that city council members have. I entered the race for city council with my eyes wide open. I had no idea, because I didn't care at the point, what the compensation was. My goal for running was to be service to the public. I understand other council members have different situations than me. I know the state encourages, through statute, these raises to try and encourage other people to run for public office, but frankly, as you heard the city attorney say, it's fifteen or sixteen hundred bucks a month. You're going to have to increase it tenfold to give young people with families an opportunity to serve on council and not have to have a time commitment with other jobs. It's a lot of hours. I can tell you that I've broken down the hourly rate, and I make about the same thing as a city council member as I did in nineteen seventy-eight as a United States Marine Corps Sergeant. So, I don't think we get an exorbitant amount. All I expect is my expenses to be covered, and they are. I look at the economy today, I do all the grocery shopping in my family, you're paying about seventy percent more for eggs, fifty-six percent more for milk, and probably a million percent more to fill up your cars with gasoline to get to your jobs and your kids' activities and things like that. We've also had rates increased for the city for water and sewer, which were necessary. They couldn't be avoided, and we're shortly probably going to have an increase in our trash rates for our city, the residents of our city. And just looking at what goes on now, I, I will not be in favor or vote for a compensation increase, especially for this twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. I would consider waiving this year's and maybe tying in to the CPI or a raise for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year, but I just think now is not the optimum time for it.
Who'd like to go next? Councilmember Santangelo?
Thank you. So, I'm going to give the, the other perspective. I am, it's always an uncomfortable position to, as an elective official, be weighing in on your own pay, your own compensation, and so I just kind of want to put it out there that I think it's an uncomfortable conversation to have. I did not go, run for council to make money. I, too, did not even know that there was compensation when I first pulled papers. But the reality is, is that I am, I'm a single mother, and yes, my kids are in college, but I'm still paying for that. Well, one of them is still in college. And I am still working full-time. And in order to make some of my council commitments, I actually have to take time off of that full-time job. And so, in order to make up for that compensation, I count on the compensation that we get. And going into it, I didn't realize that, but as my sixth year here, I count on that money. And so, I look at that compensation, not for me personally, but to the institution in going forward, the institution of council, and wanting to make sure that going forward, this dais isn't just made up of retired people that can afford to not have to worry about what that compensation is. And I don't mean that in a bad way at all. I just mean that I want this council to be as diverse as possible. And so, I think keeping our compensation at least advancing forward, however, a little bit, I think is really important. I think, you know, we gave four percent wage increase to city staff. We're talking about our city manager later tonight, and so I would be considering a three to four percent increase.
Who wants to go next? I'm looking back and forth.
I can go next.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I, I think I do agree with Councilmember Santangelo. Being in this position as a council member is, in my perspective, not equitable, and while increasing a compensation is not the full solution to this issue, I do believe it is a path in the right direction. If we review the report, and I do agree with this, this comment, which is that elected officials make to their positions and that their time commitments and limited pay discourages many who cannot afford to give of that time from running office, for running for office. So, the adjustment may help attract more to run for public office. So, I know that this, what we're voting on is not necessarily what will impact us right now. We don't know what council will look like in twenty-five and twenty-six and moving forward, but I do believe it offers some fairness so that people who come from diverse socioeconomic backgrounds won't be as discouraged from running from council or for running for this position at city council. I know that for me personally, I have had to pay for childcare, because I do have three children, and we have multiple meetings, not only city council, but, you know, multiple meetings within the city and those outside. We attend multiple events, and we want to be as present as possible. We definitely spend a lot of time reading, and there, there's a lot more time that goes into this than I thought that it would. And so, I do believe that in order to give that fairness and that opportunity, I would also agree to at least a three percent, if not a four percent increase. And for those council members who are strongly opposed, and that is why I asked that question to the city, city attorney, which is, can they just not take it? So, it sounds like if there is a council member who is strongly opposed to taking any percentage, then they could just not take it, but it wouldn't impact those future council members who are in need and who could really utilize those funds to cover some of those costs that, that are spent. So, that is my, my position on it.
Vice Mayor Kildee?
So, yes, I agree with everything that has been said here, being up here for a while. And yes, you're absolutely right. There's been times when we haven't taken any increased competition, compensation, but we've also been times when we've taken the full five percent. I have my own business. It does cost me money when I'm gone to hire help. I'm very sensitive to that, to the community here, and I want to make sure that everybody understands we don't do this for the money. It's an honor and a privilege to serve up here, and each one of us definitely agrees with that. What we might want to consider is that if you look at what, oftentimes, you use the LA, Los Angeles CPI, and my understanding that it's somewhere along four percent or that. What we might want to consider is not necessarily taking the full five percent that we could, but if you cut that somewhat in half, somewhere in the two to two and a half percent range, and perhaps do that for the two years here. That might be a discussion that we all might want to have here. It does somewhat allow us to not necessarily keep up with inflation. I mean, you're definitely not going to do that here, but it was never set out to be that way as well. But we all know that, you know, costs are rising for all of us here, and the suggestion I might make is that we do it either between a two and a, two and a half percent increase for the two years, and that can certainly be a start of discussion if my colleagues are, would like to discuss that. So, that's a suggestion that I would have.
Okay. And for, speaking for myself, I, I respect all of my colleagues' views. I think reasonable minds can, can differ on this. In the interest of brevity, I will simply say that I agree with Councilmember Tennyson. I'm not in favor of an increase in compensation. I would support a waiver, which is in the staff report, and those are my views. So, I think we've all had a chance to express, so time for somebody to make a motion, I think.
Question. Councilmember Kildee, was your suggestion two-point-five percent per year?
It would be between two and two-point-five percent per year, depending upon what council, of course, feels comfortable with. I'm, I'm comfortable either way, whether we don't have any or we have some. I'm comfortable either way, but my suggestion is because of the dialogue, I think, that we've talked about here, that either a two or a two percent, I'm more comfortable actually with the two percent myself, but we can certainly start a dialogue on that if you so choose.
Councilmember Kildee?
Would you at all, like, I, I come from very much like a lens of equity and also a pay-equity gap with women, right? There's already just coming into any position, there's a difference there. Would you at all feel comfortable with possibly going for just the three percent instead of the two-point-five?
I'm more comfortable, I think, with the two and a half, because I'm looking at the CPI, and I'm kind of cutting it right in half here. So, that's why I came up with the suggestion to have between the two and a two-point-five percent. I'm more comfortable with the two percent because of that. I think that cuts that right in the middle here with that, and at least it gives us something to try to keep up with the increased costs as well.
My thoughts.
I think I'd be okay with two percent per year. I think I could, could do that.
I think I was gearing more towards the three, four, but if we would have to go down, it would be, the lowest would be two-point-five, which is a couple dollars.
Yeah.
Two-point-five. So, I guess I can make a motion?
If you're ready to frame a motion, Councilmember Martinez Bravo, that would be great.
I can make a motion for a two-point-five increase.
And just to clarify, that was for each year, two-point-five for twenty-twenty-five, and then two-point-five for twenty-twenty-six?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a point of clarification? If you don't get a majority, can there be another motion being made?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tennyson?
No.
Vice Mayor Kildee?
No.
Mayor Trembley?
No.
That motion fails.
May I make another motion?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that we increase it to a two percent for each year.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Kildee?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tennyson?
No.
Mayor Trembley?
No. Record will indicate that that motion was adopted on a three-two vote with Tennyson and Trembley dissenting. Right? Did I reflect that correctly? Okay. All right. That is, oh, we're nowhere close to six o'clock yet. There we go. Okay. Our next item is a public hearing item. It's item Y on a proposed zoning ordinance text amendment to allow pet cemetery uses in the professional office zone. My understanding is that the applicant is not here tonight, that there was some miscommunication relative to the date set for this item. And because of that, we have a public hearing scheduled. Could I inquire, Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker cards on this public hearing item?
We do not have any speaker cards.
Let me inquire of the audience. Are there any members of the audience who are here to speak on that item? It's item Y relative to pet cemetery in the professional office zone? All right. Since we don't have any members of the public who are here tonight, we had a public hearing scheduled, but what I'd like to do with counsel's blessing is to continue item Y from tonight, tonight's agenda will continue it to a date that's not yet set, because the, because staff will have to consult with the applicant. Rachel, Madam City Attorney, do we need a motion to that effect?
I usually ask for it if there was a date certain we were continuing it to, but it appears that we don't have a date certain.
I don't think we have a date certain.
Right.
But would you like a motion?
I would. It's good for the record that we're going to not take the item this evening and that the public hearing will be re-noticed once determined.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Tennyson. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo? Councilmember Martinez Bravo, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tennyson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kildee?
Yes.
And Mayor Trembley?
Yes. All right. That concludes Item Y. We now, let's see. Councilmember Santangelo, we're going to have to reopen the Sand District, right?
I will reopen Camarillo Sanitary District.
And we'll now go to the first of the joint discussion items between, with the Camarillo City Council and the Camarillo Sanitary District. And this first item, Item Z, is the Fourth Amendment to Employment Agreement with the city manager and the district manager, who is Mr. Ramirez. Is there a staff presentation on this item?
I do have a brief presentation.
Okay, great. Please go ahead.
Yes. Mayor and city council, on June 12th, the city council and district in closed session conducted a performance evaluation as well as contract negotiations for Mr. Ramirez. As a result of that closed session, the city council is considering a Fourth Amendment to the employment agreement for a salary increase of 4%. In accordance with Government Code Section 54953, the city council is to receive an oral report on salary and compensation increases. That report indicates as a 4% increase, the city manager will receive $313,798.78 to be effective July 1st. In addition, it should be noted that this salary range is very consistent with the range of other city managers within Ventura County. In addition, the city council will be considering an amendment to change the vacation leave to be commensurate with the city manager's experience, which is over 20-plus years. The accrual for vacation will now reflect 19-plus years per pay period. In addition, there will be a vacation leave cash out option applicable to 120 hours per calendar year, provided the city manager utilizes 80 hours of vacation time prior to that. It should also be noted that vacation leave cash outs are not subject to CalPERS retirement obligations for the city. In addition, the 4% is consistent with what the employees of the city are also receiving this year. Other employment benefits will continue as offered and there are no changes to that and that will be at an annualized basis of $191,535.47. If there's any questions, I can answer those for you. Thank you.
All right. Before we start the discussion, are there any questions of the city attorney? Our hearing, no questions. Would councilmembers mind if I go ahead and lead this off? Would you be okay with that? Okay, I just, the staff report was complete, but I do think there are some things that I want to note in context that were not reflected in the staff report. We have a highly qualified city manager with 20 years of experience as a city manager and 30 years in public service. Mr. Ramirez is in his fifth year as a highly successful city manager for our city. In my view, he offers a stable leadership and vision that many other cities in our area do not have. If I look at the market, we look at this in the context of an exceptionally well-regarded chief executive officer of a Southern California city and for fiscal year '24-'25, that city has, if I remember the budget discussion correctly, we'll get to it later tonight, 167 full-time equivalent employees. So with a federal, I'm sorry, with a fiscal year '24-'25 expenditure budget in excess of $160 million and a five-year CIP between fiscal years '24-'25 through '28-'29 with 85 public works projects totaling almost $270 million. That is a very large obligation and it is a lot of work. When you have, when you are responsible, you are the point person. And remember, this city council hires only two individuals. First being our city manager and the second being our city attorney. If I look further at market context, three other cities, Oxnard, Thousand Oaks, and Simi Valley in Ventura County, and two other, or two water districts, Kiagas specifically and United Water Conservation District, the general managers in those cities, together with the city managers in those three cities, they have higher salaries than Mr. Ramirez. I also note in context that the increase in salary, if it's approved, would be 4% and that's essentially, in my mind, a cost of living increase and the same salary percentage increase that our other city employees are receiving. With respect to the vacation leave accrual rate and the cash out option, I'll note that that is commensurate with Mr. Ramirez's 20 years of experience and it's utilized by many other cities for their city managers. For example, Oxnard, and this is all a matter of public record, Oxnard, Ventura, Simi Valley, and Thousand Oaks. And actually, the cash out option that we're considering tonight is more conservative than those other cities. The bottom line for me is that Mr. Ramirez, as our city manager, is paid very well, but his salary is also commensurate with his responsibilities in light of the budget and all that our employees and commensurate with market conditions. So I find myself, you know, as a council member of a professionally managed city, I have a fiduciary responsibility to be a responsible steward of city finances. And at the same time, I have an equivalent responsibility to ensure that our city has the best management possible. So it's a balancing act, like many other decisions we have to make. But in light of those comments, I'm in support of this Fourth Amendment to the employment agreement and I appreciate my colleagues letting me speak first. So who want, and I realize that's a little bit out of order usually, but I wanted to go first. Who would like to go next? Vice Mayor Kildee?
Well, we have a way of saying here ditto. I just want to add just a little bit, just very briefly here, that I come from retail. And retail is, shall we say, a challenging environment and I'm very sensitive to the amount that people get compensated for their special work ethic and knowledge that they bring. It's important to realize too, to get good people, you have to pay them. And this city has always put our employees first. And as far as I'm concerned, as long as I'm here, and I'm sure my other colleagues will have something to say about this too, it'll be that way. You know, very, I understand what, you know, $300-plus thousand is. It's a lot of money. But I also think it's important to know that we expect a lot from the individual in question here and that's our city manager, like we always have. There's several times where I call, because I work a lot and I call a lot of different hours and he's always available for me. And he's the right person for the right job at this particular moment, as far as I'm concerned here. So I can support this and I will assure the public that we do get our money's worth out of what we pay our city manager.
So ditto to both of my council members who spoke before me. This is not an uncomfortable discussion for me. Camarillo is a really special place and, you know, I talk to other council members and I talk to staff at other cities and they always commend us and they always talk about how wonderful our city is. And it's not just what it looks like, but it's how it's run. It's not just our city streets, but it's our finances. And all of those things don't just happen. You know, we just opened tonight with a presentation talking about and awarding people in our community that make things happen. And that's how I look at our city manager position. The city isn't wonderful just because, it's because people are working hard to make it so. And that starts with the leadership, which starts with Greg Ramirez. And we are really lucky to have him. We're lucky to have his hiring practices and I am fully in support of his, of this motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Sure. Ditto, ditto, ditto to the three who spoke already. I'm also very comfortable with a 4% increase, which in my mind, it's really the cost of living in compensation, which is the same that was provided to all of our employees within the city. Mr. Ramirez comes with 30 years of public service experience. So he's not brand new to this and it really shows. He is a true visionary and he's forward-thinking. He is present in our community. I do believe he's leading the city in the right direction and he has not only met our expectations, but exceeded our expectations. This was mentioned already, but the salary is comparable to other city managers in the county and it is actually lower than some jurisdictions. In terms of the benefits, I'm also comfortable with that. I am proud to say that the city of Camarillo offers excellent benefits for all of our employees. And I am thankful to the many people who were on the dais and doing this work before me so that they made it possible to have a city that is financially sound. We do run a great city and I get that feedback all of the time when I'm at different events, when I'm out in the community. And I agree with Councilmember Santangelo that it doesn't just happen on its own. It happens because there is, there is good leadership. And with staff, I know that starts with our city manager. So thank you, Greg, for all of the great work that you have done and continue to do. And I am comfortable with the increase as well.
Councilmember Kildee?
Ditto, 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 ditto. I just want to say I've been very pleased with 18 months on council at the responsiveness of the city manager. Questions or concerns I may have, guidance that he sometimes provides to us, neophyte council members that are learning on the fly. I would much rather spend my time on this council dais for however long it is with Greg as our city manager and not having to go through a search in hiring of another city manager because I don't think we'll find anyone as good as Greg and I wholeheartedly support this amendment to his contract.
Well, consistent with that discussion, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the recommendation. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Tennyson?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kildee?
Yes.
And Mayor Trembley?
Yes. Record will reflect that that item was adopted on a 5-0 vote.
Do we need a vote for sanitary?
Oh, we need a vote for sanitary, thank you.
Okay. And we'll also need a motion and a vote for sanitary district?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call vote.
Director Kildee?
Let me think here. Oh, yes, I'll support it.
Director Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Director Trembley?
Yes.
Secretary Tennyson?
Yes.
And Chair Santangelo?
Yes. That passes unanimously.
And thank you for reminding me, Susan. All right. It is one minute to six. And I know six o'clock is a time set aside for our public comments, but we can't actually ask for public comments until 6:00 PM.
We can wait 30 seconds if you prefer.
Can we wait 30 seconds? Is that okay? Well, and here's the game plan. My thought would be we take public comments and then we go ahead and do a short recess and then we'll come back and tackle both the budget and capital improvement program items. Is that okay to everybody?
Yes.
All right. So we are in a long wait of about 15 to 20 seconds, I believe, until it's six o'clock. And I sure hope whoever's speaking understands we can't take the public comments until six o'clock.
My computer shows six.
Okay, good. Then it's time, then it's time under our agenda for public comments for items that are not on the agenda of the city council this evening. I have one speaker card, David Dooley, Dulay. And Mr. Dulay, we have a rule that we're limiting, we limit our public speakers to three minutes on the item and then after that, I have to ask you to stop. Thank you.
Council members, my name is David Dooley and I'm the founder and president of the Camarillo nonprofit, Advancing Parenting. Advancing Parenting does one thing and one thing only. It gives away sets of bumper stickers that have parenting tips on them. There are 52 bumper stickers in a set and the messages focus on the development of children's mental health, character, and intellect. And people love them. At stoplights, you can use your rearview mirror to watch drivers read the message. They smile, nod, and give thumbs up. If there are passengers, someone will read the tip and comment. Then everyone in the car reads it and conversations start up. It's wonderful to see people discussing parenting. I think folks are reacting this way because there's a real need for quality parenting information and they're pleased to see it presented in this very public way. Advancing Parenting has requests from all over the United States, Canada, and Australia for thousands of the sets. The requests come from schools, child abuse prevention councils, family resource centers, children's advocacy groups, United Ways, CASs, and pediatricians. They would like to put them in holders and place them on counters so staff and visitors can choose one for their cars. They would also like to give them away at meetings and events and put them on fleet vehicles. Sadly, Advancing Parenting hasn't, hasn't the funding to print the stickers and ship them. Traditional funders won't support Advancing Parenting because the impact of bumper stickers cannot be measured. Local groups won't support Advancing Parenting because their money won't stay in Ventura County. Last, Advancing Parenting is just a one-man operation. There is no office and there are no employees. My question for the council is this. I have one set of the bumper stickers. Would the council like to have them so they can be put on city passenger cars and trucks? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dulay, very much for your comments and thank you for your work in this field. I hope that you understand that because this is an item that's not on our agenda tonight, we're not able to discuss the matter. But we appreciate you being here. What I would encourage you to do is perhaps speak with one of our city staff members while we take, while we're out for a short recess. Beyond that, unfortunately, we can't, we can't go tonight because it's not on, not on the agenda. Thank you very much. All right. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the city council? Madam Clerk, are we have any other speaker cards? All right. It's now 6:0, almost 6:05. We have two just little, really tiny items ahead, including the budget and the CIP. That's a joke. Why don't we take a 10-minute break and come back at 6:15 PM? So the city council will stand in recess until 6:15?
And Camarillo Sanitary District will stand in recess as well.
We're in recess.
Okay, I'd like to reopen the Camarillo Sanitary District.
And we will go ahead and reopen, reconvene this meeting of the Camarillo City Council. And this first item, with the consent of Councilmember Santangelo, for both the council and San District would be to amend the fiscal year 2023-24 budget and adopt the fiscal year 2024-25 budget and related resolutions.
Absolutely.
All right, we're in joint session. And, oh. Mr. Uribe, sorry.
I will start it off, thank you.
We can give you the intro, okay.
Thank you, members of the City Council, members of the Sanitary Board. We'll be doing a brief presentation tonight on the 2024 proposed budget. For the public that may be watching at home, I will add additional context to say that we did have a budget workshop on Saturday morning, May 18th, for over two hours where we met and went into a lot more detail discussing the budget than we will tonight.
And, Mr. Uribe, I'm sorry to interrupt, I know you were going to do the introduction. Let me just inquire of our city attorney. I know Mr. Kildy needs to recuse when we come to the portion of the budget on trolley.
He can sit for the presentation, but when it comes to the motion, I would like him to, he'll, I'll note his recusal for that motion.
So they can do it at that time?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Time for the introductions and we open now?
Yes, thank you. The items we'll be going over tonight, there are a few. There is the 24-25 proposed budget, that Reina will be walking through some slides. And then the GAN appropriations limit is another annual action that we take place. The GASB 54 Commitment of Fund Balance, and then the City and CSD Compensation, Classification and Benefits Program. So I'll turn it over to Reina Bassett, Budget and Purchasing Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. This is better?
That's better.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, we will present to you the 24-25 fiscal year budget. Our budget development process is quite lengthy, but it's very detailed and thorough, and it's a coordinated effort between City Council, City Departments, and City Manager's Office. We start the budget process in November with a kickoff meeting, where we announce our timeline and deadlines. And we ask the departments to submit their submittals in the beginning of January. Between January and March, we take in consideration the council's goals and objectives that are reviewed and approved by council in February or March. Then we come back to council with a preliminary budget review to go over our revenues for the city for the upcoming fiscal year. After that preliminary budget meeting, we come back to council with a more detailed budget review for both revenues and expenditures. And this year, we held that meeting on May 18th. The next step for the process is the adoption, which is why we're here tonight. And we present to you a balanced budget, meaning that our operating revenues meet or exceed our operating expenditures for fiscal year 2024-25. Tonight, we present you a citywide budget and the revenues for $136.7 million, with the largest fund and the discretionary fund for the city being General Fund, for $60.7 million, and we will go in more detail in the next slides. And all the other funds, as you see there, the enterprise funds are $50.6 million, which includes our water, wastewater, solid waste, and transit operations. Then the other smaller funds are our internal service funds, such as information technology and risk management. And our special revenue funds, like our gas tax and SB1 that are used for capital improvement projects. The citywide expenditure budget for next year, 24-25, is $161.6 million. Again, with the General Fund being the largest fund, in the amount of $57.9 million. The General Fund revenue is $60.7 million, with the two largest revenue sources being our property tax, in the amount of $20 million, and our sales tax, in the amount of $19.5 million. The remainder is a combination of our transit occupancy tax, or otherwise known as the hotel tax, as well as the franchise tax, our building permits, and business tax. Our revenue, our expenditures, rather, for General Fund are presented to you in the amount of $57.9 million. The largest expense for the city in the General Fund is our police services, with the Ventura County Sheriff's Office, in the amount of $21.9 million. And other operations, such as the library, the animal control contract, and other city departments are included in the $17.2 million graph that you see here. I will turn it over to Mark to continue the presentation.
Yeah, the, the annual GAN appropriations limit is required by Article 13B of the state constitution, which limits the amount of taxes that can be appropriated by government. And the word appropriated means basically spend. So there is a spending limit, that is the GAN appropriations limit. It's required to be set each fiscal year, and it's adjusted by an annual inflation and population growth factor, and it's adopted by resolution. So the appropriation limit for 24-25, after adjustments, is calculated to be $139.8 million, as the limit that government can spend in taxes. The appropriations subject to the limit, or the budgeted expenditures that we have for 24-25, are $62.5 million. So that's to say that we are way below our limit. The next item is the GASB 54. This was something that came out in 2011. It requires categorization or classification of fund balance in the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, or the ACFR. City Council may adopt, may commit fund balance for specific purposes by resolution. At June 30, 2024, the General Fund, Fund Balance is projected to be $92 million, and the recommended commitments under GASB 54 are a total of $88 million. We'll see that on the next slide. The, again, ending fund balance projected as of June 30, 2024, $91.958 million. And the commitments broken down are, number one, the City Council goal, per policy, reserve policy goal, 50% of General Fund expenditures equates to $31.2 million. Next, we have facility improvement projects of $14.4 million, a natural disaster recovery of $10 million, the PVRPD Community and Senior Center of $8 million, economic development, $5.4 million, continuum of care, $3.8 million, the Camp Springs debris remediation, $200,000, and then a loan to the Water Utility of $15 million. Now, that loan amount is an as needed, would only be used if the Water Fund needed some assistance, and we have up to that amount committed. And if anything was used as a loan to the Water Utility, it would be repaid back to the General Fund. So that is the total commitment of $88 million. Then we have another line for restricted and unspendable. That means $2.4 million of General Fund, Fund Balance that is already restricted for specific uses by law. All of that leaves the bottom line, ending unassigned fund balance, projected as of June 30, 2024, about $1.5 million, that can be used for any purpose. The last item is the City CSD Compensation, Classification and Benefits Program. The City Council goal, to maintain an effective workforce through competitive salaries, benefits, and training. We have a Consumer Price Index, CPI, inflation factor of 4%. That's a March-to-March measurement, year-over-year, built in for a July 1st, 4% cost-of-living adjustment for all employees as of July 1. There are no major changes to the benefit structure. There is an increase in cellphone allowance and in management leave for eligible employees. So I will pause there to see if there are any questions on anything we've mentioned to this point. The last, if, if there are no ques, I'll pause for questions, yes.
A quick question. The population growth factor, is that exactly what it is? Like, it depends on the, the growth of population, that, that's how that's evaluated?
Yes, the, the, the state statute offers a couple of different measures. It could be the growth in the county, or the growth in the city, and we take the larger of the two. In this case, it was the growth in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one quick question.
Yes.
Mark, does the GAN limit only apply to the General Fund revenues and expenditures?
It, it applies, no, good question. It applies to the use of taxes, proceeds of taxes. Taxes being the sales taxes, the property taxes. Property taxes we receive in other funds besides the General Fund.
Transient occupancy tax and all that. So it doesn't apply to fees?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Kildy.
Yeah, Mark, I just kind of quickly, I believe in that GASB statement that those monies that are saved, like, let's say, the debris removal, those monies are there, right? They're in the budget, they're there in case we need to, to, you know, flip the switch and use them at some appropriate time.
Correct.
And they've been there for several years, correct?
Right.
And they're, the money's there?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions before Mark starts up again? Okay, Mark.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I'll turn it over to Bobby Dame, our finance analyst, to go over a budget in brief, concept that we've come up with and we wanted to show you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. So this is not, while it's not a new concept, we received some feedback at the May workshop about trying to take our large, 300-page budget document and break it down into something that's a little bit more digestible for the non-finance reader. So our attempt at that, this first year, is to create a document that we have saved on our city's website right now, and Kerry's going to navigate to it for you. It's an adopted, there you go. And this is meant to be a draft. The color's not coming through quite as it is in the actual PDF. There's kind of a blue hue to the background. But this is meant to be something that's interactive, that's easily digestible by the community, something that conveys both our budget development process, the City Council goals. If you scroll down, the City Council goals is actually linked directly to the adopted document. If you click anywhere in that area, it'll take you directly to the City Council's strategic plan and goals. If you navigate back, you'll, and scroll down, you'll see some of the snips of, of what was in the budget presentation tonight, but really just super-high level, where the money comes from, citywide budget, revenues and expenditures, some detail on General Fund specifically, a revenue and expenditure breakdown, some detail about how our property tax dollars come in, as well as sales tax, the city share, and then some details about city's leadership, and then the input that's vital from both the council and executive team in developing the budget. So this is, this year's version, it's in draft. We'd be happy to receive feedback from you. We can send the link after the meeting so that you have some time to take a look at it. And we, as we move forward in future budget development processes, would like to build on this and make it more robust and more interactive and more valuable to the community, so feedback is really important. But this is in response to you guys, and, and understanding that what we present isn't always the most readable and understandable for the broader community, and we want to make sure we're responsive to that. Thank you. If you have any feedback or comments, we can take it an hour later, once you've had time to look at it.
Thank you, any comments, questions?
I do have a comment.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo.
Thank you very much for taking that opinion provided on May 18th and providing us with this. I'm really excited to look at it into more detail. And this is why I love Camarillo, because staff is so wonderful. We all have different ideas, and we all want to make this city a better place to live and function, and you are just so effective and efficient in doing it. So thank you so much for this.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you.
I'll turn it back.
What's up next?
Thank you.
Who's up next? Okay.
Thank you, so now what we have are several recommended actions on the city side and the CSD side, the first of which being related to the trolley budget, which we have a council member recusal.
Yes, just to indicate that Councilmember Kildy will just step out into the hallway. He does have a conflict related to his business and the location of the trolley stop. So just for the first action.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Okay, the first recommended action is for City Council to adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 24-25 trolley operation budget.
All right, are there any questions from council members relative to this recommendation? Hearing none, do I hear a motion on this item number one, under the recommended actions? We have a motion and a...
Second.
And a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tennyson?
Yes.
Mayor Tremble?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Kildy is recused.
Correct. All right, that item is adopted on a 4-0 vote.
Councilmember Kildy, paging.
We have to do a San District.
Oh, I apologize.
Hold on.
No, one more, one more motion, sorry. I apologize.
We need to do, we need to do San District.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, so can I get a motion for Camarillo Sanitary District?
I'll move.
Second. Oh, I beat Councilmember, take Councilmember Tennyson's a second.
I have a motion and a second, let's do a roll call vote.
Director Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Director Tremble?
Yes.
Director Kildy is recused for the record. Secretary Tennyson?
Yes.
And Chair Santangelo.
Yes. And that passes four to nothing.
All right, so now we're on recommended actions under item number two, which is adopt a resolution approving the FY 24-25 budget and authorizing appropriations for FY 24-25 excluding the trolley operation. Let the record reflect that Councilmember and Director Kildy is back in the hearing room. Are there any, are there any questions for Mark or finance staff relative to item number two? If not, I'll entertain a motion for City Council action on this item number two.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion. Do I hear a second? And we have a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tennyson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kildy?
Yes.
And Mayor Tremble.
Yes, record will reflect that that was adopted on a 5-0 vote.
And can I get a motion for Camarillo Sanitary?
So moved.
A second.
And a roll call vote, please.
Director Kildy?
Yes.
Director Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Director Tremble?
Yes.
Secretary Tennyson?
Yes.
And Chair Santangelo.
Yes.
All right, I discern a pattern developing. We now are on to item number three, which is to adopt the resolution that selects the factors used to calculate the limit and establishes fiscal year 24-25 GAN appropriation limit for the city of Camarillo at $139,841,666 as calculated. Are there any questions for staff on this item? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Tennyson, second by Vice Mayor Kildy. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tennyson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kildy?
Yes.
And Mayor Tremble.
Yes.
And that motion was adopted 5-0.
And for Camarillo Sanitary District.
I'll move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Director Kildy?
Yes.
Director Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Director Tremble?
Yes.
Secretary Tennyson?
Yes.
And Chair Santangelo.
Yes.
All right, that brings us to the end of that joint discussion item AA for both the City Council and the Sanitary District.
We, we do have two more, I'm sorry, two more actions, recommended actions.
I'm sorry.
Related to the...
It doesn't bring us to the end of that one. Sorry about that.
It's okay, two more.
Okay, so two more? Should we just keep on going?
Yes, please.
All right, so with respect to item four, boy, I, I, I was just in a hurry. Okay, City Council adopt a resolution to commit $88,36,791 of the projected General Fund balance for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2024. Any questions from council members for Mr. Uribe? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
With approval.
I think Vice Mayor Kildy got that one.
Second.
But Councilmember Martinez Bravo got the second. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tennyson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kildy?
Yes.
And Mayor Tremble.
Yes, for the record, adopted on a 5-0 vote.
And for Camarillo Sanitary?
I'll move.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote.
Director Kildy?
Yes.
Director Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Director Tremble?
Yes.
Secretary Tennyson?
Yes.
And Chair Santangelo.
Yes.
5-0 vote.
All right, moving on, passes, yes. I, I don't know that it was in suspense. Item number five, City Council adopt a resolution setting the Compensation, Classification and Benefits Program, and I was reading it on the, there we go, Benefits Program and approving a statement of understanding for the terms and conditions of employment for Camarillo Sanitary District employees effective July 1, 2024. Wait a minute, is this a Sanitary District only item?
We can do, it's the same, it's the same action. We can do, the way you've been going, city first, and then sanitary district, you can follow.
Is that okay with you? All right, let's do City Council, any questions, City Council, on this item? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion? And a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo? Gosh, hold us in suspense. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tennyson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kildy?
Yes.
And Mayor Tremble.
Yes. For the record, that, that's adopted 5-0.
And for Camarillo Sanitary?
So moved. Second.
And roll call vote?
Director Kildy?
Yes.
Director Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Director Tremble?
Yes.
Secretary Tennyson?
Yes.
And Chair Santangelo.
Yes, and that passes 5-0.
All right. So Uribe, do we have anything else? I don't want to cut us short here.
Nothing else related to the budget, thank you.
Nothing else related to that, okay. That will now finish that joint discussion item AA. We'll now go to a joint public hearing with Camarillo Sanitary District Board of Directors on item AB. You hear concurrent, Madam Chair? Fiscal Years 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Program, and... Do we have introductions? Mr., oh, okay.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Tremble and councilmembers.
Sorry, Mr. Grub.
My name is Andrew Grub, and I'm the Principal Civil Engineer in the Capital Projects Group. Staff is here tonight to present the Fiscal Years 2024 through 2029 Capital Improvement Program, referred to as the Five-Year CIP. I'd like to start by extending my gratitude to our City Council Planning Commission and the many staff who helped develop this document, and those who will be delivering this document, these projects over the next fiscal year. I'm fortunate to be surrounded by an exceptional staff, ready to serve our community. The Capital Improvement Program is updated annually and includes five categories: transportation, water, sanitary, storm drainage, and buildings and grounds, covering the current fiscal year 2023 through 2024, plus five fiscal years. Staff workload and the budget are focused on those projects listed in upcoming fiscal year, year one, that starts on July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025. This CIP includes 85 projects totaling $295 million. Fifty of these 85 projects are active and include the current fiscal year and year one. This year, eight new projects were added, including bridge preventative maintenance, chargers for transit vehicles, and sanitary projects. This shows a timeline of the Five-Year CIP approval process, starting on April 12th, with the draft Five-Year CIP distributed to council and reviewed at the April 24th, 2024 meeting. On May 14th, the draft Five-Year CIP was presented to the Planning Commission for review for conformity with the general plan. On May 18th, the joint budget workshop was held, and on June 12th, council found the Five-Year CIP in conformity with the general plan. Which takes us to tonight's recommendation. Staff recommends that City Council and the Camarillo Sanitary District adopt a resolution approving the fiscal years 2024 through 2029 Capital Improvement Program.
All right, do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Grub? I just have a couple of comments. First of all, thank you, Andrew, very much. And I note, for example, I think I, when we were speaking before about Mr. Ramirez's contract, I think I said 85 Public Works projects at $270 million, but it's actually two, I must have taken that figure wrong, and it's actually $295 million, which is even more.
And that includes the current fiscal year. The 270 million is, is the years one through five.
Okay, all right. But good, I'm glad to know, glad to know I got that right. But just quickly, as an editorial comment, for any members of the public who are watching live stream, please know that there have been hours and hours and hours, dozens and dozens and dozens of hours spent by both staff and council, both on the budget and with respect to the Capital Improvement Program. So this is not, I repeat, not a situation where we are simply rubber-stamping what's been presented to us in the course of 15 or 20 minutes. We have spent a lengthy amount of time on all these items. And it's because we have, in my view, an exceptional staff. We've been able to make revisions to all this, and then present it to us, it's been presented to us in a relatively summary format, so we're really appreciative of that. But I don't want anybody in the public to be under the illusion that we haven't spent any time at all on these issues. Thank you for letting me make an editorial comment. Are there any questions of Mr. Grub on the Capital Improvement Program? Vice Mayor Kildy?
I just want to make a comment, if I may too. Since I've been up here, I've been the direct benefit, and I think the majority of residents in our city, that we've had healthy budgets to be able to put money back into our infrastructure here. That's been a goal of several councils in the past, and it continues to be a goal. And I want to thank our employees for working tirelessly on this. You only have to go very far to see other entities, unfortunately, that are not in the situation that we find ourselves in, and it's a credit to many, many, many players, and including our public, that have supported this by the inconvenience of seeing this. But it's, definitely makes our city what it is. And it makes me proud to have a very, very small part in this, and to see what our city's been able to do. It didn't always be that way, but it is now, and it's been that way for several years. And there's a lot of efforts from a lot of different people to make this come to fruition here. So keep it up, you know, there's going to be some inconveniences for some of the public here, but I think it's also very important that it's going to be for the beneficial good of the whole. Those are my comments, and thanks for allowing me to make them.
Any other questions and or comments? Councilmember Martinez Bravo.
Ditto and ditto, and I will just add that I'm also very grateful to the many people who sat here before me, who have been doing the good work in keeping a sustainable and financially sound city. And thank you so much to staff, because I know you put a lot of time and effort in getting to the point where we are now. And I'm personally very excited about the many different projects that are coming our way that are consistently beautifying and making our city a better place to live. And it's really thanks to your work and your dedication. And I'm, I'm very excited to move this forward. Thank you.
Anybody else before we go to motion? All right, let's do City Council motion first. Do I hear a motion on City Council?
I'll move.
Now, that's truly, I'm not sure.
How are you going to do that?
We'll go with Councilmember Martinez Bravo made the motion, and Councilmember Santangelo has the second.
We're that excited.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tennyson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kildy?
Yes.
And Mayor Tremble.
Yes, record will reflect that item was adopted on a 5-0 vote.
And for Camarillo Sanitary?
So moved. I'll second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Very fair we are tonight. Director Kildy?
Yes.
Director Martinez Bravo?
Yes.
Director Tremble?
Yes.
Secretary Tennyson?[1772.01] Secretary Tennyson?
Yes.
And Chair Santangelo?
Yes.
And that is also adopted a 5 to 0 vote.
And we should also just note for the record, it was a public hearing item, but we had no members of the public here tonight, no comment cards or anything like that. Madam city attorney, should I, just for the record, open and then close the public hearing, or what would you like us to do?
If you want to have it on the record, you could ask if there was any public comment. Not hearing any, you could close the public comment portion.
All right, we'll open the public hearing very quickly, retroactively, with respect to those two items. Are there any members of the public who wish to address either the council or?
Senator district.
On this item? I see none, do you see any?
I don't see anybody.
All right, then.
The record will reflect there was no public comment.
Great, and with that, we'll close the public hearing for city council.
And we'll close the public hearing for Camarillo sanitary.
All right, thank you. Sorry, we skipped over that little detail, but we want to make sure we were okay. All right, I think that's, we've now come to the end of our agenda, Mr. Uribe. I haven't cut us off at the kneecaps on anything else, right? Okay. Any other business? Then with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the city council.
And I will adjourn Camarillo sanitary district.